Good evening and welcome to the October 26th meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're glad to have those of you in the audience with us and we're glad to have those at home that are watching on TV. I will remind board members, please, when you speak tonight, please remove your mask in order for clarification for the television. At this time, I'm going to ask you to stand as we have Ms. Maria Johnson, Principal at Scales Elementary, and also Christina Boone, Principal at Discovery School, lead us in our pledge, followed then by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our moment of silence. All right, board members, you have received a copy of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Have a second.
Okay.
Ms. Goff, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Communications, Ms. Trail?
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Murfreesboro City Schools would like to thank Justin Oldham and Jennifer Windrow for their financial sponsorship of the school pantry food program for the 21-22 school year. As you know, we distribute these foods in backpacks to our children, so that happens every week on Wednesdays. Murfreesboro City Schools would also like to thank public supermarket and public supermarket charities for their donation of 424 gift cards valued at $20 each. The cards can be used to purchase school supplies and other items to help ensure that our kids have what they need to be successful. Those actually were given to bookkeepers today, so they will start using those for the school supplies needed at their schools. Mitchell Nielsen would also like to thank the community partners of First Baptist Church on Castle Street for their generous donation of goodie bags for every staff member at the primary and the elementary campus. We love our school partners. I wanted to really quickly tell you, right before I left, I checked our numbers and we have 123 students registered for our MTSU, Murfreesboro City Schools tennis clinic tomorrow. It'll be outdoors at the MTSU courts. We are so glad to be able to offer this again. It's been over a year since we've done it, so 123 students out. Most of them for the first time, they all, I think I told Dr. Duke, it was 89% of them said they were beginners, so we're going to get them out and moving and hopefully it's a nice afternoon. And then our City Schools Foundation will be awarding nearly $48,000, actually it's a little bit over $48,000 in grants this Friday. Can't wait to share the details with you. We haven't announced it to our principals or to the winners yet, so we'll announce more details later on, but we will put those out this Friday at the schools during in-service time. I can say the grants range from about $200 to about $8,900, so quite a bit of money going out. So I always appreciate the foundation and the work they do. Those are your communications, sir.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. All right, public comment, Dr. Duke?
Yes, sir. Good evening. Tonight, we have one individual who has requested to address the board by completing the necessary paperwork. Individuals who address the board will have three minutes to speak and their time will begin once they state their name. Our individual giving public comment tonight is Mr. Michael Dewey. He has confirmed his address and we invite him to the podium at this time.
All right, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Once again, let's recap my objective from the last meeting that I spoke. As I stated before, I realize that I'm not going to change the board's mind. Me speaking today is not for the school board, it's for it who is obviously overlooking the legal aspects and science behind the COVID mandates that have been put in place. My comments today are for the parents and citizens of Murfreesboro. This school board and administrative staff have claimed that they're following CDC guidance. And although CDC may make recommendations, they are not requirements. This school board makes requirements, mandates, policies that go against our own Tennessee State's recommendation, who actually does have the authority and jurisdiction on the health of our children to make mandates, excuse me. For example, according to CDC, the state laws establish vaccination requirements as well as numerous other health-related decisions for our children, not the CDC. CDC makes a whole host of other recommendations while according to their past practice of COVID mandates, I now expect this school board to follow all CDC recommendations. Let's start with childhood obesity. Per the CDC, one in five children and adolescents are obese. Most kids, again, according to CDC, consume as much as half of their daily calories at school. CDC recommends that schools implement policies and practices to create a nutritional environment, support students in making healthy choices. I find it quite interesting how for the breakfast, school system offers nearly zero protein options on the menu this week, offering things like breakfast rings, blueberry snack and waffles, and crescent rolls. This does not seem to be offering a nutritional environment to support healthy choices. Furthermore, why does the school not have policies and practices with doing entry point searches to ensure children are not sneaking in candy, Twinkies, or cupcakes? Is this absurd? Absolutely. This is overreach, and that's my point. The school board has become the dictator of our child's health based on recommendations that come from an agency that is in the business of making recommendations for you as the public to determine your risk factors and make choices based on that information. We, as parents, must retain our rights, weigh the risks of those decisions, and make the best choice we feel for our children. Having the CDC or the school board making healthcare decisions based on recommendations is absurd, especially when it's hypocritical to follow some recommendations but ignore others. Let's step up to the plate, school board, and complete the dictatorship role you've already taken and start making policies that go in line with everything the CDC recommends. If not, then you're merely picking and choosing what you think is best for our children and not truly caring for the health of our children, as you say. Thank you for your time, and lastly, let's go Brandon.
Thank you, sir. Spotlight on education tutoring program. Ms. Arnett?
I introduce Ms. Arnett. Last May, you may remember, the board approved the use of ESAR 3.0 funds to pay for our before and after-school tutoring program. As one of our strategies to address the COVID-19 pandemic, Ms. Arnett has been leading this work and she is going to be presenting tonight an overview of the program that we have started.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
As Dr. Duke said, I just wanted to give you a brief update as to where we are with our extended contracts that you did approve in ESAR 3.0. Currently, 10 of our 13 schools have chosen to begin before after-school tutoring this semester, leaving the remaining three schools to begin in January. Of the 10 schools, almost all have started either last week or this week with the tutoring program. We are excited to say that we have currently or are currently using 24 of those contracts, which leaves 28 for those to be used in January. Our tutoring sessions do meet two or three times a week for 45 minutes with no more than four students at the table with the teacher, and we are focusing on second and third grade literacy for this. We do have a couple of schools that have chosen to have a computer literacy lab open where students can work on iReady or and/or Imagine Learning. We are very excited about this program and getting it up and running. I have to take a moment to thank Jessica Weekly and the ESP site directors. They have helped get the kinks worked out. There's still a few little kinks that we're working out, but I do want to thank them for helping get this going, so we're very excited about this program. Any questions?
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions?
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good report.
Thank you.
Our consent items, do we have a motion to approve the consent items as printed?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Action items. Approval of schools' safe school grant.
Yes, sir. This past May, the board approved the 21-22 Safe Schools Grant during the approval of the general purpose budget process, and that approval was made based on preliminary and projected grant totals. The actual grant amount doesn't come out until after the budgeting process, so we always start with a projection. The actual award for this school year is $227,419, which is actually about $35,000 less than our preliminary estimate. In addition to this decrease in funds, we have received new state guidance that has removed our ability to use this grant to pay for our ESP curbside check-in program. Due to the new information and the slight decrease in funds, we are presenting the amended budget to you for approval. I do want to make sure we know that the ESP curbside check-in program will continue, but it will be funded through our ESP budget. That budget already has sufficient funds to absorb this program without submitting an amendment. We are happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this grant, but we are recommending approval.
Do we have a motion to approve the grant?
So moved. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. You have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Now, any questions or comments? If none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. School nutrition.
Yes, sir. The USDA, which monitors our school nutrition program, requires that we carry a three-month operating reserve in the fund balance. For the school nutrition program in our district, that's about $1.4 million. At the end of the fiscal year of 2020, 2021, our nutrition fund had a reserve of a little over $4 million, or about $3 million over the allowable amount. This larger-than-normal reserve can be traced back to several factors. That includes the COVID relief money that's been paying for many of our school lunches, tightly-controlled labor costs, and so on. Since our reserves exceed the three-month requirement, we must submit a plan to the state that outlines how we will spend these funds down back on the school nutrition program. So the budget amendment that you have in front of you tonight increases the expenditures by a little over $2 million, which will reduce the surplus in fund balance to an allowable amount. The priorities, as I said, are to reinvest these into the school nutrition program. That includes a full-time field supervisor, new dining room tables and equipment at many of our schools, the purchase of new food service equipment, the creation of a test kitchen, and also growing our farm-to-school program and investing money in our farm-to-school program. The school nutrition fund will also begin picking up maintenance and repair costs for school nutrition items that we had historically budgeted out of general purpose budget. Our farm-to-school program will add three part-time farmers, I'm sorry, four part-time farmers, three in-ground gardens, repair some existing greenhouses, purchase a new greenhouse for Salem, and farm equipment, including a truck and tillers. Ms. Shealy, Ms. Williams, and I are happy to answer questions you have on this budget amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the amendment as stated.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Now, discussion, Mr. Ballard?
This is Christmas come early, isn't it? I mean, to fund $4 million in excess that's available to us to spend, how does the state, you mentioned the state's going to, we have to submit to the state how we're going to spend that. Have this already been considered in the guidelines of what we can spend that money?
Yes, and I'll invite Ms. Shealy up to the podium as well if she wants to help provide additional insight, but they do. There are allowable expenses that we have to with all of our federal grants that we have to stay within constraints, and as we stated before, these have to be reinvested into allowable school nutrition items, and that's where that has come. You want to add to that?
I had to submit the financial plan to the state effective October 1st. It has been approved by the state.
Okay, so they have seen this.
Yes, they have to sign off on it.
They got the blessings of, okay. And they allow, you know, increasing manpower with those funds?
Yes, they do.
Okay, once again, the conversation we've had before, I have a worry point that after the Biden dollars dry up, you know, that we've added the manpower that we're going to have to find ways to fund.
And I think it's a, and I appreciate that point, we're looking at about $250,000 of manpower expenses out of this $3 million surplus. It is not uncommon, as Ms. Williams, Ms. Shealy, and I have looked back over the budget for school nutrition, for them to consistently have a surplus of about $1 million a year. Again, we want to hold some of that back for unforeseen circumstances, but that kind of ongoing surplus is what's led us to this point where we have the excess. So we feel, that was a question we discussed when we made this plan, and we feel very comfortable that we will be able to maintain these part-time farmers that we're adding and the field nutrition supervisor without it impacting the budget. And the intent would be, it will stay in the school nutrition budget, so this will not ever transfer over to the GP budget.
Okay, one last question then about when we do this and when we do other amendments that include manpower and we talk about we have the money to pay for it, when we calculate that we're going to be able to have two new supervisors, let's say, and they're going to cost X dollars per year and therefore we can afford to do that, are we considering the legacy cost in that?
I mean...
Legacy cost being, you know, that we're going to have to, they're going to be funded for pension, they're going to be funded for insurance, they're going to be funded for all of those.
I'll let Ms. Williams answer that specifically as she is the one that did the projection on these costs going out.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, we did look at all of the total cost of the individual, part-time and full-time, including an average cost and even a little bit higher than average cost of medical insurance, dental insurance, and retirement. The part-time farmers, since they are part-time, we don't factor in retirement for part-time individuals, but yes, for all of the other labor cost.
Okay.
I'd also like to add, one of the things we're looking at is, as we, I know you heard a little bit about farm-to-school last month as well, by adding the full gardens, again, that is food that we'll be using that will go right back into our cafeterias as well. So we will be able to pull that food and use it in the cafeteria as well.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Ms. Moore?
Thank you. I had a couple of questions about this as well. When I saw that we had all this excess money, two things jumped to mind. One was, was there a way to improve the quality of food with some of this extra money? I see some of it is allocated toward food. And the other, if I'm remembering right, I know some of the shortages we had or difficulties with staff earlier in the year involved cafeteria staff, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
How are we doing on that now and is any of this money going toward, I don't know, somehow filling those spots if they're still vacant, if we're still having difficulty recruiting people?
Absolutely, great. I'm going to answer that question first and then let Ms. Shealy talk specifically about the food quality. So that is something, we do still have openings, how many openings do we have?
18.
18. We have, as you guys have already approved, the retention, the signing and retention bonus, so we have addressed that now in several departments, including both school cafeteria and ESP. What we know is, again, also looking at the fact that we are running consistently with a surplus, that we are going to have to address outside of just a one-year stipend, retention is looking at next year's budget, addressing salaries specifically for school nutrition, because even as we spin this down, if our trend continues to trend the same way, we would expect to continue to have a surplus in this area. Knowing that it's limited, we would want to address salaries specifically moving forward in addition to the stipend we did this year. So I hope that answers your question?
It does. That's what I was getting at.
Yes.
If there's money for raises and if that would help us recruit.
Yes, and then as far as the food quality, I'll turn that back over to you.
As far as the food quality, of course, we've been limited with the way we're serving our food into the classroom also. Also, the fact that COVID has hit has put many restrictions on us, but I did add an extra vegetable back into the lunch menu. I have to factor in all the calories, the sodium, all those items, fat, vitamins, and I have to plug that in and make sure we stay within those requirements. And as of right now, we are meeting all USDA requirements for both breakfast and lunch.
Okay.
And hopefully there'll be more foods coming along, but we just got marked out of four more items today.
To add on that and Ms. Shealy, correct me, one of the issues when we think about traditionally eating in the cafeteria, which we haven't done for a while, is the possibility of students to have multiple choices when they eat, right? So they can choose what their major protein is, choose the vegetables they want, have choices on their fruit. That's one of the areas we've been significantly limited as we've been delivering to classrooms, because we are giving a choice for each one because we're prepackaging those and giving those to students. So as we think about food costs as well, my hope is, as we move in the next few months, hopefully with the vaccine on the horizon and numbers continue to go down, and us quickly moving back into the cafeteria full-time, that will then give us the opportunity to bring a lot more choice back to student meals than we currently have.
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
I just wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you to Ms. Shealy, because this has been a difficult, what, year and a half? I know the nurses have been working really hard and we do appreciate that, but the whole school nutrition piece, and I thought about it a lot when Dr. Duke was talking, that you guys have been very limited in what you've been able to do, and that whole deal of bringing lunches and the breakfast to the rooms and then being short-staffed, and then the supply chain issue, and it is so surprising to me that you still show up here every time we have school board meeting, and you're always smiling like, oh, everything is just great. I wish you were my lunch lady when I was in school, but thank you for keeping our ship so steady. I want you to know that I appreciate it as someone who enjoys eating quite a bit. Thank you.
Thank you. I have an amazing, amazing group of people that work in the kitchens.
Thank you. Thank you to all of your staff. Please pass it along.
Appreciate that.
Ms. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This will be from Ms. Williams. Typically, I would ask if this was necessary and reasonable, but it seems that it is necessary. So I'll ask, do you feel that the dollars have been maximized in how they've been utilized and that they are additionally reasonable?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Nothing further, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Any other comment or questions? We have a motion on the floor to approve the grant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Next item, director's evaluation tool.
Yes, sir. Tonight, we are presenting and recommending, I recommended, evaluation tool to be used in the board's evaluation of the director of schools. This was created through consultation with TSBA and the board chair and by using TSBA's model evaluation tool as a guide. The actual evaluation will not occur until June after this school year is completed. Approving the tool in October and waiting till June to complete it ensures there is clarity for the director and the board on the performance objectives and expectations. You have seen the evaluation tool. There are three segments in the evaluation. Appendix A is an administrator survey completed by school principals and administrators in the district who report to me. Appendix B is the board's observational data completed by members of the school board, and appendix C is the quantitative section, which aligns to goals and student achievement rates. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have regarding this document.
Ms. Barton?
I do that every time. Just a comment, so glad to see you moved the evaluation to June. I never understood why we did it in October. I mean, you're trying to think about this school year and part of last school year, and I just think it's very confusing, so I'm really glad you did that.
Ms. Moore?
Are we doing questions now or do you want to...
Questions, yeah.
Okay. Well, I want to say thank you to this. I got out our old evaluation tool and kind of did a side-by-side, and I think this is a great improvement. A lot of new qualitative factors that I think are great, and I also appreciated that now there are actual quantitative factors, which I don't believe we had before, and I know that's a risk for you anytime there's a hard number, but I feel like our teachers and principals have to deal with hard numbers as a risk for them, so it's fair that you be held accountable for those as well. I know one of the things that we're going to work on over the winter is a strategic plan for the district, and so I think this is a great tool for now, and I hope that next year, we're able then to look at the strategic plan and really mirror your evaluation tool tied to what the goals we're setting for the district. Couple of measurables that I hope, it's fine that they're not in there this year, I think, but I hope that I'll see in the future, just based on what our strategic plan is. One would be an improvement in our subgroup performance, either just overall improvement or a narrowing of the gap between subgroup performance and then overall student performance in the district, and also some kind of metric for retention of effective and diverse staff in the district. Those are my comments on it, but I think it's a great tool. I really appreciate, I can tell there was a lot of thought that went into this, so thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Duke and I met and went over different evaluation instruments, I think, and came up with this, and I think it's a very good one. I'm like Roseanne, I think we have done it earlier in the year because of TSBA, but now we have decided that perhaps it'd be better, particularly being that Dr. Duke is still in his first year, and January would be a little bit quick to evaluate anybody, so we recommend that we move that till June and gives him a full year for us to evaluate. All right. Do we have a motion to approve of the instrument?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. Any other questions? Mr. Ballard?
Just a question, as we approve this, it is dynamic. I hope we'll have the opportunity to, as Ms. Moore just indicated, there are some measurables I'd like to discuss with you, and if I discuss those with Dr. Duke, how do I portray that to the rest of the board? For instance, if I say, you know, you know, I've got a concern about, I want to make sure that safety is in there. How are we going to measure that? We'll have to have some discussion about that, but, so I guess I'm looking for some guidance, maybe Elizabeth or Dr. Duke, how we should...
I think that quantitative section is the way to address it, and I thought it was important for us to go ahead and approve a tool early in the year, and as I mentioned in one of my communications to the board, my hope is, next year, we would actually approve this in August and then have it completed in June, so we have the whole year, with the understanding that January will be that time. We always look at that five-year plan, which, again, my office has started kind of drafting and working on some ideas now, and I'll be in contact with you around some items that you would like to see in that five-year plan, and that would be a great example if you say, I really would like to see something in our plan regarding safety and a measure, and then we would actually lift that from the plan and add it to the evaluation once that's been established. We're at a little bit of a different place this year because we haven't updated that plan since I've taken over, and so that's why this one, I tried to stick really tightly to, and as Mr. Kamau talked, to student test scores and measurables that TSBA recommends. But in January, when we do that five-year plan, the short answer, adding those metrics in there and then us being able to pull that into the evaluation tool.
Okay, but then how do we discuss that again with the rest of the board? I feel like I'm in a silo most of the time.
Yeah.
If I speak directly with Dr. Duke about X, Y, and Z, I feel like I need to talk or let each of you know that it's X, Y, and Z also that I've discussed.
Don't we have a retreat scheduled for January?
We do. We have a, yes, we do have a January retreat scheduled to look at the five-year plans. That will be one opportunity we have.
Yeah, so the appropriate way to handle that would be for you to have the conversation with Dr. Duke, and Dr. Duke, if it's something that you guys agree would be included, he would include it and present it to the board, just like he's doing now, for discussion amongst the board in a public meeting about whether or not this document is acceptable, and if there was a board member who might object to the inclusion of whatever metric that another board member has asked Dr. Duke to put in, then that... that another board member has asked Dr. Duke to put in, then that conversation would be had, just like we're having, what you all are having right now, and a decision can be made then by the board as to whether to include it or not.
Okay. I think I've got it. Thank you.
So basically, you would have the conversation with Dr. Duke, and Dr. Duke would present it to the board for a discussion. And if a board member objected to it, then they would voice that during the discussion, and a vote could be had on whether or not to include it.
All right.
Very good. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to approve the instrument. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, and there is none. Thank you. All right, reports and information, enrollment report. Mr. Marlin, how are you, sir?
I'm doing well. Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Evening.
I'd like to share with you information from the enrollment for this second period, which if you'll notice at the top of your first sheet, which is the enrollment form, this covers the period from September the 3rd through October the 11th, the second 20-day period. Our enrollment at the end of that period was 9,349, which is an increase or shows growth from the end of the year. At the end of last school year, we had 9,000 students, so a growth of 349 students. Also on this page, you'll note that our attendance, average attendance percentage was 94.3%, and that does include quarantines and students who are out because of COVID. On the second page, you have our PTR, our pupil teacher ratio information, and I'll draw your attention to the bottom of the page, the box at the bottom that, that's labeled the regular education PTR. You'll note there that our kindergarten through third grade pupil teacher ratio is 18.93, excuse me, 6.3 per class. My contacts getting kind of tired. And then the fourth grade through the sixth grade represents 20.59 students per teacher with an overall PTR ratio of 19.30. The next page in our report is the truancy report, and if you'll note there that at the end of this second period, we have 30 students who have met that, that threshold of 10 days of unexcused absences, or 10-plus unexcused absences, as compared to six students that first period. It's pretty typical. The thing that I would like to report as, is that as I monitor this information from the schools, all the, all the schools are on top of this this year. Last year, you know, we were unsure because of COVID, you know, who, when to pursue, and we gave a lot of grace last year, understandably. This year is a little bit different, and we are, all of our schools are on top of this. So they're, they're working with these parents now to make sure that these students, that hopefully their attendance will improve. And the last page of this group of documents is the chronic absenteeism. Just as a reminder, this is the criteria of missing 10% or more. So at the end of 40 days, the two 20-day periods, that would be students who have missed four days, four or more. And if you'll notice, we, there's a slight decrease, and I've, as I've explained this before, we expect this number to decrease, decrease each time period. But 2,000 students, 2,031 students have missed four or more days. So as we monitor this, what we're watching for is to make sure that this improves over time, that students, you know, miss less days, and hopefully none of our, or very few students will miss 10% of the school year. Any questions?
All right. Any questions on the enrollment report? Thank you, Ms. Marlin.
Thank you.
Zoning?
Yes, sir. I have some information to present to you tonight, and we're going to pull a PowerPoint up on the screen, hopefully in just a second, to kind of walk you through some information on enrollment and looking at some steps that we feel like we need to take as a district regarding zoning. So I'm going to just take you through a few numbers to walk you through this. As Mr. Marlin just said, we are at 9,349 students, which is about a 3.8% increase over last year. And really where this growth is coming from, as I'm sure if you've driven on veterans lately, is the west side of town, which we're very familiar, is our hot area that's growing. When you look, this is just a snippet of our growth since 2014, 2015, when that's the year that overall Creek opened on the west side of town. And so you can see each year, we have significantly added students, except for that year that's in the pink color, which of course was last year, the COVID year where we actually went down. But if you look at our typical years, we are growing on average about 2.6% a year. And again, what's really important is know where is that growth actually happening? So if you think about since the end of the 14, 15 school year, we've grown about 1,200 students, a little over, almost 1,300 students, and just in the last five years, including COVID, we've grown 752 students. So when we think about where we're growing, I'm going to kind of draw your attention to this chart, and I'm going to kind of walk you through it to show you some information. In the yellow, you see the school names and you see classroom capacity. That is the number that if we maxed out every general education classroom, how many students we can hold. And when I say max it out, I mean, that means it is full at 20 students in every classroom. Now, as you know, students don't come in nice packages of 20 and 25. It'd be great if they did, but they don't. Yes, sir.
Question. When you say max out the classrooms?
Yes, sir.
Now, are you, these are, I guess I'm going to say grade-level classrooms and not music and art and?
Excellent point. You are exactly correct. I'm talking about general education, kindergarten through sixth-grade classrooms. This leaves our music classrooms intact, it leaves our libraries intact. If they have a STEM lab, it leaves that intact, our art rooms intact. This would be classrooms, and also takes into consideration the number of classrooms we have to have for special education, specifically our tier-five CDC rooms and our resource classrooms. So those have been taken out as we look at those. So these would be general education rooms. And when I say maxed them out, I'm also looking at every classroom being at that 1 to 20, or 1 to 20 ratio. As we know, in some situations, as Mr. Marlin just reported, we're actually looking at a PTR about 1 to 19 in those lower grade levels. So when you kind of look over at potential open seats, which I'll draw your attention to that now, the yellow is what we could be if we were at 100% in every classroom, the green is the current enrollment, and the white is where it says potential open seats. Now, I want to be real careful. So if I look at Black Fox, and it says it has 54 open seats, that does not mean there are two empty classrooms in that building, because the students don't come in pairs. You have a classroom with 18, in a third or fourth grade, they may be sitting at 22, so it balances out that way. In addition, we use a lot of our classrooms for other issues, such as English as a second language program, intervention classrooms. We may use classrooms for schools where there are multiple interventionists, where we have school counselors or social workers outside of an office and actually have a classroom space. So I want to be clear, we have, these rooms are being used, but as we look at planning and looking at where we have room to grow, where we could shift, well, this classroom ESL, we could put in a smaller classroom, because they have smaller students, or we could move this person out. That's what we're looking at. So you can look down and see where we have some potential open seats, and I'll draw your attention to the red numbers. The first being overall Creek, where it says right now, they have 22 kind of potential open seats. That's very low, when you think about how big it is there, and again, every classroom is being used, but their PTR is not completely maxed out yet. If you look at Scales, they're actually sitting over capacity, which means in some of those classrooms, you're going to see higher than normal PTRs. Of course, we are staying in the state ratio, and I want to make that very clear. All of our schools are in the state ratio, but individual classrooms may have more students than that 1 to 20 ratio. And if you look at Salem, you're looking at 105 students over capacity. Currently at Salem, both music teachers are on a cart. They have two music rooms in that building, neither of which are currently being used for music. They're being used for classrooms and ESL rooms, and those music teachers are traveling. They, of course, have a STEM lab in that building that's also being used as a classroom and not being used as it's designed. So you can see that growth of where we are today. So what I want to look at is where we could actually be potentially by the end of this school year. And the reason I say that is I'm, what I'm looking at is the number of new construction permits that have been issued. So what we look at is, since May, how many lots have been permitted and construction has been approved to start. And we know it'll take four to five months for that home to be built, students to move in. So by the end of the school year, there is the potential of us adding new students based on new homes being built. And so if you look at the next column, that's what that is. The pink is the number of, not the number of permits, but the number of students it could bring us. So I'm going to go to Salem. Salem, we have the potential of gaining 44 more students by the end of the year. We come to that number using a formula, where we say, this is how many permits have been issued. We plug it into our formula to kind of tell us how many homes generate students, and that gets us to 44. So you can see those numbers in red again. I'm looking at overall Creek, by the end of this school year, could actually be in the negative, which means they're over capacity. Scales continues to grow in the number of students that are under overcapacity, as does Salem being the big winner again, which has the potential of being 150 students over capacity by the end of this school year. Now, let's talk about next year, and this will be kind of the final piece of the puzzle. We're also looking at where will we be next school year, and for that, we're looking at lots. So that would be areas the city has said is a lot for a house, but the construction hasn't started yet. So we have a little more time, but we know that it's coming, and therefore the potential of student growth is coming. So we use that same kind of formula and look at our lots and correspond that to how many students. And again, we see overall Creek, Scales, and Salem being the big winners. Overall Creek, if looking at the lots they have open, starting next year, could be a full 23 students over capacity. Scales, 39 students over capacity, and Salem growing even more and has the potential of being almost 200 students over capacity at the start of next school year. Any questions on these numbers before I look at our next steps?
Paul?
Just thinking of this in conjunction with the numbers that Mr. Marlin just gave us about the 300-plus students we've grown, are we seeing the proportion of where those students are going to school following kind of this? I'm just wondering if all these new students are coming into new construction, or if there are places we're seeing people moving in other parts of the city, or?
It's really aligned with this.
It does. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Seth? To be sure, this includes out-of-zone students as well, as far as the, what we have on hand now?
This does include, yes. This includes the number of, so the current numbers would include any student that's here on a zone waiver. The additional numbers of, of course, would just be only numbers for new construction. So I want to be really clear, if you live in a neighborhood and a family with one child moves out, and a family with three children move in, that's not accounted for. This, the only thing we're accounting for is new construction.
It, it appears that older Murfreesboro, where there's no room for expansion, are not in the areas that are showing the growth. It looks like, like Northfield.
Places where we're not seeing as much growth, John Pittard, Northfield, looking, Irma Segal is having some growth, and I think, and we expect in the next three to five years, that will pick up a little more as well. But we know that we, John Pittard, Black Fox, Casey Lane currently are seeing smaller growth, even though we know specifically in the Black Fox area, we are expecting in the next three years to potentially see some significant growth out of Black Fox. And that's, those are conversations we are having in conjunction as we talk to the planning department and looking with them and saying, you know, where are we anticipating growth as we make it, as we make our plans. So when we think about, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was going to say, when we think about our immediate need, our immediate need is we have to address the overall, the overcrowding at Salem, Scales, and overall Creek for next school year. We have, obviously, already being overcapacity in two of those buildings, and the potential, specifically at Salem, that had been significantly overcrowding. We want to make a plan for that and give parents time to adjust for that as well. And as we look at these rezoning options, we are really want to begin thinking about planning for possible growth in the next five years. And so those are the conversations we're having right now with the city, which is, where do you expect to grow and what may not be showing up in these numbers, so that we can plan accordingly. We obviously want to make a zoning plan that hopefully is good for a very long time, but in Rutherford County and Murfreesboro, we know growth is always going to be something we deal with. So definitely looking at a plan that will keep us for at least three solid years. So kind of our timeline, October to December, at the central office team, working to really develop rezoning options. What we would like to do in early January is to present some new zone options to the board for consideration. That would then give us January and the beginning of February to have some public input meetings, seek public feedback, take the input you give us from January's meeting, with the goal of, at the February 22nd board meeting, presenting a new zoning map for next school year. If it's approved that night, that gives parents before March lots of opportunity to know where, any changes that may be impacting their family. Again, zoning is one of those things, we want to leave consistent as long as we possibly can, and we understand that families pick their homes and pick where they live based on their school zone, and we know that's really important. But again, with the growth we're seeing, we know we have to address this need immediately.
I have a question, probably for Dr. Duke. How much discussion goes on between the planning commission and you or our schools before new settlements are, are done? You know, that's been something that I've watched happen over and over again, and I've lived here all my life. It's, it's just, if no consideration is given to infrastructure like schools, when they're deciding where to put new neighborhoods. So do they ask us anything? I'm just asking.
So I can't speak to what happened prior to March 1st.
I understand that.
I will say, since March 1st, I feel like we've had a really great relationship with the planning department and working. I have conversations with Mr. Blomley on a regular, pretty regular basis, as he sent me information. And even as we begin to look at the next three to five years, he's provided us a lot of information regarding where the growth is, so that when we plan, we know what's coming. So for instance, Black Fox is a great example. You know, immediately think, well, we can move, we can make some changes here, but we want to be aware of what's coming, and we want to be aware of that. And then anytime the city is looking to annex property, they all always submit a report of how that will impact us as well.
So just how it would impact us, not whether or not we think that would be good. I, I know I'm opening a can of worms, but I mean, I just.
It's a good can to open.
I've watched it for almost 60 years, and it, and we're not the only department that suffers. Transportation, roads, I mean, there are all kinds of things that we don't, that aren't pulled into the discussion when new developments are started.
Ms. Seth?
I want to ask the question again about transportation, because anytime we talk about rezoning, we already know, I mean, you're just setting us up for a real good year next year. Bill's not here tonight for me to mention new schools, so since he's not here, I'll say. But when we talk about rezoning, we already know that that's actually the number-one commenter. Until COVID came around, you, we get more comments on zoning than anything else. I do know that that means a lot of the zone waivers, I know how that's going to be affected, but I'm concerned about the transportation piece, whether that means we're going to need within the next three to five years, and I know we can talk about that later, strategic planning and all of that, but length of bus ride, new buses, which means new personnel as well. So I'm just wondering, when you do have the discussions, I'm kind of like Roseanne, some of these discussions that are, because it kind of puts us in a catch-22, whereas, you know, we know these developments are coming, but don't dare ask for a new school. You just got a new school, but you're building a neighborhood with 80 homes, you know, in a median range, so we kind of get the idea that these are going to be families. So I'm just wondering if we've thought about the transportation piece, and I don't know that there's a And I don't know that there's a maximum number of minutes that's allowable per rule. I don't know. Miss, maybe our attorney can tell us how long we can keep these kids on a bus?
Well, I will say.
There is, I don't, I can look it up in the Tennessee code, but there is a maximum.
I thought there was, I was pretty sure, but I just couldn't remember what it was.
So, you know, and looking at transportation as something we're considering now, and again, my kind of first intent is how do we make sure that we maximize the space we're having? And so as we look at that rezoning option, obviously, we're including Mr. Rome in transportation in that to say how it's going to affect us. You've seen in the CIP that you have approved, we have several new buses already slated to come for growth anyway. And his team is really great at taking what we have, looking at what we need and forecasting that out and saying, okay, how do we make these bus routes work in a way that are appropriate for our families so that we are making sure we're following our, the state law and looking at that? And again, you know, the city has been really, I felt like we've worked really well together since March first. I'm really pleased at how we've been working and just the outreach they've had with me and myself and my staff being able to call and saying, this is what we need. And we've worked really well. And so even today, we had conversations about, okay, looking at the zoning options for next year. Let's make sure we do this together so that we make the best choice for our citizens.
And I can appreciate that. I think we do really well as far as our PTR is always below. I'm just wondering if our transportation is also below so that we can feel more comfortable about if we have to nudge that, you know, a little bit more because definitely that's going to come into play. So it's just top of my mind. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Settles, it's one and a half hours in the morning and one and a half hours in the evening. No more than that.
And we are significantly.
I know, we're way under that.
Yeah.
We need to be.
All right, other questions? Thank you, sir, very much. A report that we all will.
Come back to revisit.
Have a lot of discussion about amongst us individually and things that we need to be prepared coming up in the future. All right, a revenue and expenditure report, Ms. Williams?
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi there. So before you tonight, we have three separate documents, the first of which is the summary of the total revenue we've actually received to date, starting July one, and our total expenditures. And again, you can see in total, we have more expenditure than revenue. And a big part of that is timing, like we talked about last month. So many of the revenues that we received at the beginning of the fiscal year were actually accruals for the prior fiscal year. We are starting to see on our sales tax on the revenue side, we do have from this time last year, a fifteen percent increase in our sales tax revenue that we collected in Rutherford County. And that's interesting to note as well because our shared proportion, our distribution that we share total students to Murfreesboro City and Rutherford County schools, we dropped just a little bit last year. So even taking into consideration that dip in the per pupil share, we still had a fifteen percent increase in revenue. Another big revenue source is our county property taxes. We won't see big dollars in our county property taxes until November, December, January, and February. So at this time of year, during the summer especially, it's pretty small compared to what we'll see in the fall and winter. Our BEP revenues are starting to come in consistently from our state sources. So we also have grant revenues that are starting to come in. And our revenues and expenditures are consistent with this time last year. And I will have to say this, we're really excited. Our S R three federal grant was approved, and I think we all did some version of a happy dance. And you may have even heard a collective shout of joy coming from South Church Street when we found that out as well. And I say that because our grant has, the S R grant has just been approved, and the general purpose fund has been paying for those positions, professional development, some supplies and materials out of the general purpose fund. So collective sigh of relief, we will start moving some of those expenses to the federal side and you'll see a little bit of, about four hundred thousand dollar decrease in our expenditures. So what we're doing moving forward is now that this big pot of money, S R three, has been approved, it's over twelve million dollars, we can start looking at all of the funds as a whole and determine where the money needs to be. Is it in the general purpose fund, the federal fund? We're looking closely at school nutrition fund as you've approved in your, the budget amendment. So we're collectively looking at all of those funds to get in a really good shape as we start the budget process.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Personnel report?
You have the personnel report in front of you. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them. By the way, I didn't dance. You don't want to see.
Oh, my goodness. It's not too late.
I may throw out a knee or something.
Are we losing teachers?
Yes, sir, but we're also hiring teachers.
And why are we losing teachers? Any idea?
Right now, there is a huge teacher shortage. And some teachers sometimes think the grass is greener on the other side of the fence or for some reason they want to, it's a school system that's closer to home, things like that. So they decide to try it.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Ringstaff? Mr. Ballard?
How are we doing with our subs as far as incentives? And is that, is that giving us an uptick on the subs?
Yes, sir. We have hired sixteen new subs since last Thursday. So it's about an average of four a day. If we keep that up, we'll be ready for the cold weather.
Good, good.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, director's update, Dr. Duke?
Yes, sir, just a few more updates for you tonight as we end our meeting. First of all, I want to give you an update on the nursing clinics. As you may recall, we received grant money when we elected to provide COVID testing to our employees as needed. And with part of this money, the board approved the remodeling and renovation of three of our nursing clinics at Mitchell Nielsen, Discovery, and Overall. These were clinics identified by the nursing staff as those most in need of some updates. This work has been underway, and we are anticipating it'll be done shortly, so, and by the end of the semester. So should you be visiting any of those schools, I was in one today, got to see the nursing clinic. It looks great. Our team is doing a great job. So I would encourage you to stop by and see those if you're any of our buildings. A calendar update, beginning this week, we have several special events on our school calendar for the next few weeks, in fact. So this Friday is our next staff in-service day and planning day for the year. So students will not be in school on Friday. In addition, Monday is our scheduled parent-teacher conference day. So there'll be no classes again on Monday as our teachers will be meeting with families to hold our student-led conferences, and we're really excited about that day. So we do have a couple of days out for students coming up. I did want to make you aware, which I'm sure you are, that there are several items happening at the state level that I want to make sure I bring your attention to. The first is the governor's announcement on examining a new school funding model. For the next few weeks, groups from across the state will be providing formal input. I am very excited to say that our very own Lisa Trill was asked to serve on the Education Foundation Subcommittee. So she'll be representing MCS on this team. It'll be a great opportunity for MCS to have a voice at the table around school funding. In addition, the state's going to be holding a variety of public input meetings that you can join in person or through Zoom for anyone to attend. I've emailed those dates to you, but I would encourage not just you, but the public as well to reach out should they want to participate in the process. It's an extremely important process as how we fund our schools drives so much of the work about around what we're able to accomplish specifically for growing areas like Murfreesboro.
Dr. Duke, excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, regarding those meetings, they're all out of our area except for Hermitage. But did I read or understand that there's a way to Zoom into that meeting?
Yes, sir. So on that, and I can send, if you can send me the date, I'll send you the exact link or I can resend it. But you can join those through Zoom.
Okay, good.
And I would encourage anyone who's interested in that to join. As you also know, this, there is a special session that will be starting in the General Assembly tomorrow, specifically around COVID. We are anticipating several education-related bills to come out. I think the filing deadline for that is tonight as far as bills are concerned. But I will keep the board updated as far as any, any legal act or any new legislative actions that may take, that may impact us as a school system.
Just want to clarify, I want to make sure that I get it correct. We are, as a school system, in compliance with Governor Lee's executive order, correct?
Yes.
Concerning COVID, we are.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And speaking of COVID, finally, I'm very happy to say our COVID numbers are decreasing, which is very exciting. Last week, we actually had single-digit numbers almost every day.
Great.
And our weekly total positive cases was just seventeen, which is the lowest number we've seen all year. Fewer positive cases, of course, mean fewer quarantines, which means more students in school. So we're very excited about that. And Mr. Chair, those are all my updates for tonight.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right. Is there any other business that needs to come before this board tonight? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, have a second?
Second.
Thank you, and good night.
Good night.
Thank you.